Oh, yes.
Y'all want to reconvene? Y'all want to reconvene? On the meeting order, we'll move along. Miss Daniel.
Okay. Uh, so this is just an update to the board on the, um, proposed purchase of the building for the tax collector. Uh, we do have some information for you all. Uh, there's a memo that I have here, um, that just put together some prices on what it would take as far as running cables and some different logistics that would be required. But before I get into that, uh, we do have the appraisal back. Um, the appraisal came in at one million fifty-five thousand. So that's thirty thousand above the, um, sale price or the, the agreed upon price, I should say.
And who was the appraisal from?
Uh, Robert Reeve.
Robert Reeve.
And so on this memo here, that's got four bullet points there, modern tech squad. Uh, that is to run the cables required for the office, installing cameras and wiring. Uh, Net South Incorporated, that is to, that's some specific, um, equipment that's required for the tax collector's office, which Mary Carol can answer any specifics you all have. There's a really relocation of state equipment for five thousand two thirty-five. And then building signage is actually expected to be a little less than that twenty-five hundred. So the total price for these items is right around thirty-four thousand dollars. Um, but all of these expenses would be required anywhere they relocate to. Um, and then as far as furniture, um, Ms. Uh, Mary Carol has said that she will actually fund that from excess fees from her budget. So that's nothing that you all have to come up with the funds for. And, um, phones will be the same as they are now. So I mean, I think you could safely say less than fifty thousand dollars more in the, you know, this range for the actual relocation.
What about the security? Where are we?
Um, so Mary Carol can speak to that, but her thought was she was willing to hit the pause button on that to get through this. And then we can reevaluate that. Um, and that really depends on, you know, if it's going to be just a paid security person or a deputy sheriff. I mean, it depends on what that is as far as the price. Uh, but Mary Carol, did you want to speak to that?
Not gonna read that whole book to the class.
No, not this, not this time, Jamie, not this time. Our, our, this building, this building is very secure as far as strangers just walking in. Um, anytime you have a, a, a public place, the public will be there. And some people, um, want to, um, just, I don't know the word for it, but you know, like if everybody goes to Walmart, there'll be complaints and that kind of thing. And a lot of people complain in our office, but, uh, sell them, do we have to call somebody to come as far as a deputy? Uh, is for little things, there have been some arrests that a, a deputy has come and made in our office. But right now, I don't think that this should determine whether we go forward with this. We have some, uh, we can possibly arrange in our future budget.
I mean, I'm gonna have a question if I may.
Sure.
Now, when you testified here before, I wished I could put everybody on to testify and put them under oath, but they won't let us. They do in Congress, but they don't here in Tallahassee. But at the same time, you voiced concern over someone that was coming there that was possibly an illegal or something like that, and your people were afraid. Now, how do we address that this next time?
Well, they walking out there now. I mean, that they walk in, they walk in our west door to the courthouse.
What I'm asking you.
Yeah.
This is what I'm asking you.
Yeah.
I'm asking you, will you not have concern because that's the building you're in more than you would the courthouse, where you might would have to call a deputy sheriff? What, what would be the difference there?
There's, there, anytime there's public, there's also opportunity for public to get irate. Uh, the people that were coming, they were, um, there was a lot of people coming to get their credentials, their driver's license, immigrants, um, some legal, some not legal, some wanting to cheat on test, and some just legal won't, trying to get their credentials. And.
Well, what I'm trying to ask you, pardon me for interrupting, I apologize for. What I'm asking is, are we gonna start there not having security? And then thirty days, sixty days, ninety days, that we have fifty or a hundred thousand dollars worth of security. But what I want to do next is ask Mr. Bryant, Commissioner Bryant, I'm sorry, to him to allude to that a little bit, if you don't mind, if you can.
Let me ask you this, Mary Carol.
And I see the sheriff in the back, we'll ask him too, but you go ahead. What doors will you have locked out there to keep the public from walking straight?
And if I can insert myself for just a moment.
You recognize it.
Thank you. There is an exemption in the sunshine law for the discussion of, uh, building security. That can be, that's a discussion that can be had in an executive session that had been asked before. Um, that's that and litigation, um, strategy are the only exemptions. So if you all are comfortable with having this discussion in public, feel free to go ahead. But I did want to advise that building security, uh, is a discussion that we can have behind closed doors.
Uh, my main question is, when you go in the front lobby, the doors going into either DL or tag or whatever taxes, are those going to be locked?
Yes.
So who are you gonna have out front? Are you, are, are you going to have?
We'll have a receptionist will be out front.
That you have already.
Mm-hmm.
Can you put her behind that or that person behind locked doors to communicate with the public?
I don't really understand your question.
Can you, the reception, instead of having her or him in the lobby, can you put them behind a locked door with a glass?
No, but we have like part of our furniture that we are gonna get, she's gonna be behind that. It will have glass and it'll be where she can open up and speak to the, to the customers.
Guess my question would be.
Hold on.
Oh, had the driver's license place, do you have security there?
No.
Uh, and I think what might be where you're going for, I'm kinda speaking for you, but I ain't, I just want to kinda maybe clarify if this was your thinking. You're in the courthouse, naturally, if you had a problem or there probably a deputy right in there, you'd be faster there than you would be out there. But that's the only security you would have there, isn't it?
Right.
You know, if you had had a call of deputy, but, uh, you know, and you have no security at the driver's license place.
That's right.
So once you out there, you're a little closer. If there's a sheriff, a, a deputy down at the office could be there quicker than normal could be to the, to the courthouse. You know, to your. I think what you're talking about is the security life.
All I'm interested in is expense.
Yeah, right.
For me and you can balance the budget. It's not real hard to figure out.
That's right.
Well, that's where I'm coming from. Because those are the questions that anybody would want to ask me or any of the rest of them, if they get hooked up.
But the best security you got right now being in the courthouse, you'd have, they probably have deputy in the courthouse somewhere.
On, on our north entrance.
Time when you open. But I mean, other than that, there's no security.
Right.
You know, out there, it'd be a little bit loud if you had a call or deputy to get there. But, you know, but have no security at the driver's license place. So once they got there, it'd be a little better security. And it's, I guess, of what you're saying.
Well, there again, if I need to explain myself, I probably didn't articulate myself well enough, and I apologize for that. But I would, my question is expense.
Yeah.
For this board to carry you forward with that building and your expenses off. Mr. Brown.
Yeah, I guess my question was along those same lines. I know when you take into account the layout of your current facility at the courthouse and the layout of the facility that you're proposing to move into, the security, I would say, is, is equal or better with the new facility than it is with the courthouse facility. Would you agree with that?
Yes, yes.
And, and I guess my, my follow-up question is, is you don't, you do not anticipate at this point in time needing a full-time deputy or a security person to be, uh, to be at the new location? I, I would assume that you don't anticipate that.
At this time and upon opening, should we open? Um, I don't feel that we need somebody right away. If we're there and we see that we need somebody, we will be in another budget year by this time. And there's, we may have means as tax collector to hire and, or get with the sheriff. However, we need to manage if we need a deputy. We may just need somebody at the door, just.
Where did your budget come from?
Where does our budget come from?
Yes, ma'am.
The fees that we collect when we issue a driver's license and sell a car.
It doesn't come through the county.
And we get the commission off of the tax roll that we collect. And so we operate through these.
If you don't mind, the sheriff, can you elaborate on some expense there? Do you mind? If you don't mind, we, that's what we discussing is, let's, let's figure it out.
So.
You don't really hear that podium, do you?
Yeah, yeah. This is, this is my opinion. You asked for it, and I'm gonna give it to you. That building out there that they're going to, in my opinion, is more secure than the west side of the courthouse. The west side of the courthouse, you can walk straight in, straight in her office, jump straight over the desk. Just continue forward until you're confronted. Um, that building that you're proposing to go into is a pretty secure building. Um, what I maybe suggest is, rather than, if you got there and you saw there was a need, maybe have a panic button installed that would alarm, like banks do, uh, that would alarm law enforcement that we could respond. I do think the building is a pretty secure building for the most part. I went there one time to conduct personal business for my mom and dad with their social security, and I couldn't even get in the back because I had a gun on. And I was a law, a law enforcement officer, like, it's pretty tight. Uh, I will say this, if it got to a point where you're asking for security, there's, there's a couple of ways you can go about that. You could hire an armed security guard, uh, or a law enforcement officer. Now, a law enforcement officer, when you consider salary, the benefits, the insurance benefits, the retirement benefits, you're approaching on a hundred thousand dollars a year and, and the equipment that goes along with it. So, uh, that being said, I think the building's a pretty secure building.
And there will be panic, we've already arranged for panic buttons yesterday when we had somebody out looking at the building. We'll have panic.
Y'all be willing to testify and oath then.
You asked for my opinion, Mr. Sheriff, and I can hear you. And I will tell you this, if you call nine-one-one, we're coming.
I know.
All right, Commissioner Bryant.
My only concern is, like, if you could figure out some way to secure that person in.
In the front.
If, if, if there's a place that she could meet the public or he could meet the public from a locked interior office to a window. Um, I've been out there and there's a lot of windows up there. I don't know if you could use that for one or not. Think you could?
I think so, yes, sir.
And, and that's from my picking up just somebody walking in off the street. You know?
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
But, but in comparison, right now, all of your employees right now are accessible to someone walking in off the street right now. Every, everybody that's in your office, basically, there's no one that's really behind a locked, secure, no access type situation currently. That's not only for the driver's license, which is a very unsecure facility, but also for the courthouse.
In fact, you can walk in the west door, come through and come out on the other side of the metal detector.
They, they no other building in the county. I mean, as I know of, you walk into supervisor election, same thing. Uh, you go out to a community development, basically same thing. You know, I mean, you can get, there's no real security like where you got somebody locked behind and then maybe outside right here. It could probably be something like that right there. You know, I guess that's what you're talking about, Mr. Bryant, but.
And I think you already have that place up too.
We will have something in place for that reception.
That'd be something you could work to work. Security, you know, don't have it now.
Not as far as you have it, though.
Now, there was some mention about some funds being turned, unused dollars being turned.
Right.
But the problem with that is that you can't determine from year to year if there's gonna be any unused funds.
I have just a little list of, um, in the past, what was turned in. Last year, there was ninety-three thousand dollars that we turned back over to you. The year before, it was thirteen. Uh, the year before, it was sixty-nine thousand. Year before that, it was sixty thousand. So there's usually a, a good bit of money that we can turn back over. And that's the money that I was speaking of to take care of the amount that we don't have a quote for, which is the furniture, the modular equipment. And the reason for that, he said, it was just a, it's a complicated situation. You're taking down equipment and you're not putting it back like it was. We're having more put it to suit our needs because we have different needs out there. So it was just a, um, a complicated thing, and it was in the queue for this week, and they're gonna meet with the designer next week. So I knew I wouldn't have any figures, but knowing that we always turn back money and it would fall in this category of something that we can take care of out of that, and it wouldn't come from your administrative fund.
And just I think in the play the devil's advocate, if we're running such a lean budget here in terms of trying to bounce the budgets, that we may not allocate those amount of dollars beyond what is needed to run the office. You follow what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have to consider that.
Look to my left, I look to my right.
We, we leaving the security issue. I, I mean, I, I feel, I feel very comfortable with the, the facility that we're proposing or that we're contemplating, looking at is a more secure facility than where you're at now, either one of the two locations. I'll, somewhere.
Definitely, definitely. When we walk back to wait on customers, the door locks behind us. And, um, it's, it's a very secure building.
Any other question, any other thought, any other stuff we need to address here that we have?
I think the overall question that needs to be answered, or, you know, I'm assuming that based on the time constraints that we've got relative to the, uh, contract that's in place now, uh, we need to make a decision as to whether to move forward, Chairman, or, or, uh, whether to pass on the deal, I think is, uh, where we're at.
Yes.
Today.
That's fine. Your summary would be as good as mine. You know, anyway. What's the board's plan?
Oh, I think that, uh, I'll make a motion of move forward based on the, I know we got the money without having to go borrow the money or whatever. And if, and one way we could replace that, some of that baggage, pay it back, and we want to collect interest, we'd be borrowing our own money and pay it back. But I mean, I, I think by having the money without having to go out and borrow money, and we still have a little left for an emergency. And that building is only, not, that building is not gonna come around again. You know, like that. If that passes on, it's gone, you're not gonna find that, uh, uh, again without building it.
I, I concur with you, but that building is not gonna leave around to Tallahassee either.
No.
It's gonna be right there.
Somebody else may be on it.
It'll be, well, and, and you think about it, investment in Jackson County, Florida, not gonna be a lot of million dollar investors here. So putting it in reality, uh, there again, we have to answer to our constituency and the people that we work for. As I heard one of our colleagues say one time, we have to be voted on, and that's very true. So my concern will always be with the dollars and the cents. My concern also is for our people that goes to your office. And I'm sure you will agree with us, but we would appreciate, uh, you treating them with a lot of fairness and a lot of time. I, for one, use your office a lot of time for my tags and my real estate, stuff like that. But at the same time, uh, that's a big investment. And, uh, I've never made a decision on that much before at one time, but I'm prepared to do it.
I understand.
Anyway, if anybody else wants to say anything, anybody in the, in the audience, yes, sir, Sheriff, come on.
And listen to your discussion about the security.
Yes.
If you think about it, you got two offices you're dealing with. You got one that's located quite a ways outside of town, outside of Marianna jurisdiction, a long way from the sheriff's office, a long way from anything. But you also have the office located in the courthouse. If it comes down to it, you're actually improving it for the people that go to the driver's license office because they're now gonna have more of a staff to help them and be there with them. You got time response, and I think the sheriff would agree that right now, if a call came in and there was something going on at that driver's license facility, the response time is gonna be very considerable. Hopefully, somebody would be close by. This way, at least, you're in the city of Marianna jurisdiction, and nine-one-one calls, like Sheriff said, you've got somebody at the sheriff's office or the police department that could respond in a much timelier manner. So even though you don't have security at this building, you don't, you don't have it at all, unless I'm wrong, at the driver's license office. And there's a lot more going on out there.
Well, we got security at the gate there, the old part of the courthouse.
But I'm talking about the driver's license. How much volume do you have goes to the driver's license office? A lot. I mean, I, I've been out there before, and that's sometimes a waiting line. And I, I would think that to me, having your staff in one location is more secure and ones that don't even have the courthouse security at all would benefit as much as the people who live it or going out there to, uh, to get driver's licenses. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of foreign nationals that go in and out of there as much as there is at this courthouse.
More.
More probably so.
All I'm doing is bringing something out that's very concerning to people, saying, why, why they didn't think about all that and wanted to do?
How many miles is that out there?
Four miles.
Four miles. So if you're four miles from the city of Marianna and you have to respond, uh, you're a lot closer where they're gonna be potentially locating. I would think that would be, as, as far as the safety concern, that's, that was the biggest thing I was looking at. And.
And me as well.
Yeah, and I, I've been speaking with the sheriff, I think that, uh, he would agree that that's probably gonna be the best response is having other officers passing through city limits and that type of thing that could respond in an emergency situation.
I, I, I look at, Chairman, uh, you know, as we talked about last time, security is certainly a, a important issue and an important consideration. Accessibility is also another important consideration that, uh, will be immensely improved by moving to that facility and the, the accessibility to the courthouse and especially to the driver's license. But what I look at is I'm, we have been dealing with inadequate facilities, not only for the tax collector, but inadequate facilities for the property appraiser, for the supervisor of elections, for administration, uh, for a long, long time. And, uh, we've got an opportunity to buy a building for a hundred and thirty-six, a hundred and thirty-eight dollars a square foot. Whereas if we attempted to build that building today, we'd be looking at probably two hundred and fifty or two, three hundred dollars a square foot for just the building. So for me, it's just a, it's a really remarkable deal that we, that we had an opportunity to get a building uh, that almost fits her needs like a glove almost. I mean, it, it's all, it's, as I said last time, it's almost move-in ready uh, with very little work that's gotta be done to it. And a hundred and thirty-eight dollars a square foot from just a, just the only consideration being the cost, it just makes a lot of sense. And it allows us, it doesn't answer all of the facility needs that we have here at the county. We've still got other departments and, and a lot of other facility needs, but it does answer at least one piece of the puzzle. And, uh, for that, I, did you, did you put your thought into a motion? Did you make a motion?
Motion still standing.
And what was your motion, Commissioner?
Motion to go ahead and purchase the building.
Forward. Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
When this initially came up, my main concern was if we had to go borrow the money. And I really wasn't for that. I don't, I don't.
I agree.
If we had to borrow it, we didn't probably need it.
I agree with that.
But they have, administration has found a, an avenue to do that. Uh, my only other concern was the security of it. And I think if, if we can work on that portion of just securing everyone who's out front, uh, I'm good with it. I'm good with it. If we, I mean, in, in the future, you don't know what's gonna happen. We may have to secure everything we have in the future, you know? I hope not, pray not. But, uh, as it stands today, um, as long as we don't have to borrow money for it, I think the change and the, the improvement for the citizens of Jackson County will be that well deserved and well thought out, and I think it'll, it'll, it'll be all right.
I concur with what you said, Commissioner.
I feel good about it.
Bart, go ahead.
I'd just like to say this, okay? I'd like to say that, uh, we started off with, uh, affordability, the building being affordable. We progressed from that point to usability, being able to use it and be accessible to the public, which is a very, very good point. And then all of a sudden, we get off into security, okay? So I only ask, I only ask that whether the board's decision is made today that the same consideration be given to every other county department. If security is a big issue for, for the tax collector's office, I think it should be a big, uh, priority for all the other offices as well. That's where I, that's where I stand.
You got a good point.
Okay.
I feel you already made a motion.
I'll second that.
All right, I'll entertain a motion. I'm a second. Mr. Crutchfield, a motion. Donna Crowe is a second. What's the board's plan? Raise your right hand if you're for it. All right, there's your vote.
I just, I just got something that I want to share with y'all. I looked at this building for over a year. And actually Rebecca Mars Hayde and Carol Dunaway was in the car with me. It's after we had been to the old sheriff's office to look at that building. And we were just riding around, what else, where else can we go? Bad cop's available, but there's no parking there. And we went to this building or I looked at this building, and it's not big enough for all three of us, you know, for all of us to be in there. And so I had just dismissed that thought from my mind until recently. And God had other plans. And I just want to thank you commissioners. I've spoken to every one of you and told, talked you from my heart, showed you things that happens. And, and I just want to thank you for doing the best thing for Jackson County and for the citizens of Jackson County. It's, it's not about us, it's not about me. It's about the citizens of Jackson County. And, uh, I commend you for voting this in today. Thank you so much. I'm so grateful.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you all at once, one, one month. It's not that any of us up here don't want you to have that business. We all just voted the same way. And that's, uh, pretty darn good for five people that come from different parts of this county. And what we challenge you with is making it good for us. But every one of us up here get questioned every day, every day of our lives, or I do, anyway. I'm, I can't speak for the other four. So we have to ask, answer those questions. As our colleague said one time, we have to be voted on. And, uh, and you, and you do too, and we understand that. But at the same time, what we want to do is make the best decision we can with the money we have. And that's where we're coming from. I think, uh, everyone up here would agree and shake their head to that degree. Anyway, go ahead.
Oh, one other thing that we hadn't brought up. And it's, it's a good thing, but I noticed Rebecca had came the first time, you know, and, and that kinda concerned me. Well, she's needing more space. Concerned me, and I had asked a question, not in public, but it, I will answer. I said, I know her here, but it was with a Coca-Cola plant. I said, I know her here, but is, would the Coca-Cola plant be big enough for both of you? No. What's going, what's, what's, is she concerned about we're making a ramble for you? What we gonna do for her? And she said, she's already excited about going into your spot, building, you know, there at the courthouse. So really, it's making more room for her too.
Absolutely.
You know, and so it's kind of filling two spots out of one.
Right, because she was.
And I don't know, you know, if y'all knew that or not, or whatever, and I didn't want to. Right, right. So we actually have, have been hurt too, you know, by that, and she, she's kind of excited, I guess, for that.
And all due respect, and our doctors lobbied everyone up pretty well. They'll give you, there's probably a place for you in Tallahassee that you could get a job pretty easily.
That's, that's okay.
Many people are, nothing wrong, if they're poured up, won't praise his own pope. And so that's the way I would look at it. Is there anybody, is a gentleman wanted to raise his hand back there one time? Did you want to say something, sir? No? Okay, you want to say something? Okay, good, that's fine, we just want to give you an opt-in. All right? Is that all we got to do?
It's all, it's on the agenda.
Commissioner Donovan, move as we ride.